All right, it's 5:30. We will start our study session first up tonight at 5:30 is fire rental licensing. And for that, we turn it over to Chief Hoffman. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Just got a couple of slides to go through here to get some of your feedback. Any questions you might have on sort of what we're looking at, hoping to propose for the rental licensing. So with this, again, a couple of things, just go through, talk a little bit about our background, some of the challenges we're having, review the current situation, then some analysis, and where we'd like to propose going forward and answer any questions you may have. So as you know, according to our ordinance, we license all the rental units within the city. By our city ordinance, it's a two-year license, so when they license it, it's good for two years and they have to renew it. The process we go through when we do licensing, again, the owner applies for license, trying to get everybody to do it on open gov, it's process works the best there. But they apply for license, then they'll schedule an inspection. Our firefighters, our inspectors will go out, inspect the property, looking for things for relation to our minimum housing code in ordinance and state fire code. So primarily safety things. The owner pays their fees that are due. Hopefully, if there were anything found, they resolve those. The fire department will go back, do a reinspection to, again, verify that the items were fixed. And then, once everything's been fixed, the fees have been paid, we issue them the two-year license. So with that, one of the things, and we'll talk about here in a few slides, are those reinspections where we have to go back multiple times. That consumes a lot of time, so. Get into that here in a few slides. And the current ordinance, best I can tell, was enacted in 2003. That's a little background. This, I know is hard to see. This is on our website, too. This is basically some common things we inspect for. The biggest things we find generally when we do inspections of rental units are generally around like carbon monoxide and smoke detectors being outdated or inoperable or missing. A common thing is like people using extension cords and power strips as permanent wiring for different things. Again, that can be a fire hazard. So those are some of the common things. But again, we look through quite a few things with our minimum housing code and fire code. So our current fees, again, best I can tell, these were set initially. I don't believe they've changed since 2003. But our current licensing, again, if a single-family unit, you can see the license fee, there's an inspection fee, so seventy-seven, seventy-five for a single-family. Two to four units is the ninety-four, twenty-five, and you can see up the different buckets they're in. And then I have the approximate number of licenses in each of those buckets. Again, not exact, but sort of our rough numbers. You can see majority of our rentals are single-family dwellings and then the two to four units. So a couple of challenges we have as we look and manage this rental process. First one is just the number of how long it takes from when a homeowner, a property owner applies for a license, until that whole process is complete and the license is issued. Just looking back in 2023, it was average of sixty-four days. So a little bit over two months was the average time from when they applied till license was issued. We've made a lot of process change improvements with that, so in '24, we got it down to forty-one days. Right now, year-to-date for 2025, we're looking, I think it's about thirty-three, thirty-four days average. But there's still some of those beyond that that drag that out, and it's those reinspections. So that brings the next one. So the multiple inspections, like I said, we'll do the initial inspection, and then we'll go back to verify that things are fixed. But then, quite often, we have to go back multiple times. Again, that's taking time away from our crews to go out. They can't do other inspections, do other things. So you can just see in 2023, forty-three percent of our licenses required more than that one reinspection. 2024, again, doing some process changes, trying to educate the homeowners, you know, that list that I showed here, getting that out to the property owners ahead of time. We got that down to twenty-seven percent. But that's still almost a third of our licenses in 2024 required more than that one reinspection. Another item is just with the payment of invoices. Again, in 2023, they averaged thirty-six days to pay, but almost forty percent of them were over thirty days to pay. In 2024, again, it was averaged twenty-seven days, but a third of them were still over thirty days. So we're looking at process changes, things to improve that. Because again, if they don't pay their rental license fee, we're not issuing the license. And it just drags it out, and potential then we have properties that technically don't have valid license, things like that. And then, like I said, as I was looking at this, it does not appear, not that we have to change the fees, but they haven't been adjusted since the ordinance was initially enacted. No questions? Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the fee?
Yes.
So I'm gonna go to the, if you're renting one, it's fifty-seven dollars.
Yep, plus a twenty-dollar inspection, so really they're paying seventy-seven, seventy-five for a two-year license.
But if, for a two-year, if you're doing five to ten, it's a hundred dollars, arguably.
Yes.
So it's only forty dollars more, but I'm assuming that that is taking quite a bit longer to go through ten apartments than one.
Yeah, it's not ten times the length, so if we have a single-family dwelling, you know, it takes X amount of time. If we go to a ten-unit one, it's not ten times length, because, again, just the time going there. And generally, we found the units within a apartment building, for example. If we're finding problems, it's normally the same problem. It goes a little bit quicker as we go through the units, if that makes sense, or if I'm explaining that right. It's not ten times the time, but it does take us longer to do.
So if you're doing one unit, how long are they there?
Generally, for one unit, we'll probably be on-site anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes.
And if they're doing-
And then there's twenty to thirty minutes of report writing afterwards.
If they're doing ten, how long are they there?
A ten-unit, again, depending on how many issues. And if we have good support from the property owner, like if they have two maintenance people, our crew goes out there, so two firefighters, they can divide and conquer two. So if they have enough maintenance people, we won't go into units without a representative. But if they have people, we could do ten units, maybe in an hour or less, depending on how many violations are found.
Okay.
If the building has a lot of violations, it's gonna go slower.
Sure. But it's not as-
Not ten times.
-time-consuming as I thought it was. Okay, okay, thank you.
And then there's the part, like I said, average, you know, it's maybe a half hour to write the reports afterwards. And then, on top of that, we probably have about another thirty minutes of just administrative time of issuing invoices, scheduling the inspections, things like that.
And you commented that these are the fees that were set up in 2003?
To the best of my knowledge, I can't see where they've been reviewed since then.
Do you expect to come to us in January with a new format for fees?
Yep. Well, I'm not proposing a new format, but I'm proposing new fees, and that's what we'll get into next, or what some of those proposals are.
Okay.
And my thought would be is I'd like to come to you before January to get your approval to be effective January 1.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then answer any other questions or directions you'd like me to go.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief Hoffman?
So with that, we'll get into sort of our proposals then. So before I get into that, this is a very busy slide. This was in the packet, I think Administrator Tuma had sent out to the end of last week, over the weekend. Basically, what I did is look at another, quite a few other communities, and tried to compare our rates to theirs. Well, everybody has a little different structure, like ours are those buckets, again, a single unit, two to four, five, you know, with those buckets, it's hard to compare them. So what this chart does is sort of divide it down to the price per unit per year. So for example, you look at like Albert Lee, they do their licenses every three years. So I divided it by three. For example, Owatonna, one unit, the seventy-seven dollars, basically divided by two years, the price per unit per year is thirty-eight, eighty-eight. And then it goes across, like I said, we have the buckets. So you'll see, you know, two units would be divided, the price for the two units divided by two, and then divided by two again, two years by two units. So again, tried to make it all on sort of a even comparison. Then the thing at the bottom here is you can see where, I don't know if rank's the necessarily right term, but at the bottom, you can see the numbers. So there's nine different communities here. It's where we rank, where one would be the most expensive, and nine would be the least expensive for that. So as you go across, again, we're number six out of nine for one unit, and we're the least expensive for three to more units in the comparisons. Just so you can put us, if there's other communities, I tried to look at some that are comparable to us, some neighbors, then get a wide representation. Again, Burnsville's probably not a good comparison, but I've been looking a lot at their rules and how they do different things, so I threw them in. So this is just current rates today.
Question, Ed. In Owatonna, right now, if the landlord has ten different units, all one units, maybe they're homes.
Like ten single-family homes.
Single-family homes, then he gets his inspections for-
Each one would be a separate license for each property.
And that would be like one unit then of, what, ninety? Seventy-seven dollars, seventy-five cents?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. As opposed to if you had five to ten all in one building?
Yep.
So you just travel the one distance as opposed to ten?
Exactly.
It's each separate standing building, kind of. Thank you.
So questions on this? Again, this is just our base fee. But I did this to compare a couple of different scenarios we're looking at, so we can look at it, again, across the board here. So with the proposals, again, this is our breakdown here. We actually have two of them. Proposal one, we came up with, and as I, we started doing more analysis of it, there were some things about it we didn't like. So that's why, really, proposal two is our staff favorite right now. But I thought, we did the work on it, I'd include it here, just so you can see a couple of different things. So one of the big things here, again, the license fees are adjusted, but also the inspection fee went from twenty dollars, which really doesn't cover our costs for anything for inspections, to a little bit more reasonable. So taking these two and then putting them in that similar chart we just looked at, here's where proposal one, again, this isn't our favorite now, but you can see where it comes in. Putting it all on an even playing field, basically, for one unit, we'd be in the top third, but still with the larger units, we'd be down at the lower end. Then I'll go on to the next one here.
Do you tend to find less violations in fifteen and above units? Or that doesn't really-
The number of units doesn't play into it as much. It's more, we have some great property owners and landlords in town that will go in and find very few things, are very responsive on resolving them. And then unfortunately, we have a few that are a struggle.
Okay.
But it's not necessarily the size of the building, it's more.
Done.
Chief, just a question for you. You had that one slide that showed the breakdown of where the bulk of your inspections are. If you were using this chart, where would the bulk of your inspections be? Ten and less, or?
So one-unit, single-family are our biggest number of licenses, and they count for almost forty percent of it.
And then the next one was, what, two to five?
Yes, yep. And if you hold that, when I get to the end, I got a slide that sort of pulls all this together that includes that also in the breakdown, so. So again, this is proposal one. As we analyzed it more, this is not our favorite. Proposal two here is more where we'd like to go. And where this is, again, it puts us, you know, if you look at the comparisons, we're right in the middle for single-family and duplexes, and still at the lower end. But our goal wasn't to get, you know, to the top or the middle, it's what makes sense for us as we're going forward. So this goes to sort of your question, then, Don, as we look at, again, here's our current licenses. The breakdown, the one unit, the two to four, five to ten, our approximate number there. And then the percent of the markets, like I said, forty-eight percent of our rentals right now are single-family. Another thirty-six percent are in the two to four range. So just to see where the breakdown is. So if we look at our current rates, again, did the math out here, when we look at the total and the average per year, that's artificially inflated just because of how rentals come in. Some at the end of the year, they may start, end up the next year. Our rental income is between thirty and thirty-five thousand dollars per year. Depending on the year, we got a few more one-year. This year is our lighter year, because again, it's two-year cycle, so I'm expecting about thirty thousand dollars revenue this year on rental program, and then next year will be close to thirty-five thousand. But then, taking that, looking at our current rates, I drop in proposal one here, again, with the rates, going down there, the estimated income based on the number of units. And then also, I was looking at the percent increase. So as I looked at, and this is sort of what turned me off of this one, as I was looking, it's, you know, almost eighty-eight percent increase for the single-family. That seemed like it was a big jump on that. So that's what sort of gave us some pause on this, and that's why we came up with proposal two. Again, a lot smaller increase on the majority, again, our single-family homes, almost fifty percent of it, then a little bit higher increase. The net revenue's less. But again, our goal was, one of the big things in this proposal is gonna be the reinspection fees, because that's where we want to cut down the number of reinspects we have to go back to. So this is just another way, and this was in that packet that was sent to you over the weekend also. Questions on that? Otherwise, you know, the direction we're going, and wanted your feedback, is, you know, proposal two with those rates, but also adopting a reinspection fee. If you look like our building officials, we have a reinspection fee there, I believe it's forty-five dollars, and there's a set by some other things, but, you know, if they have to go back multiple times, there is a fee for that. We'd like to do that with the rental inspections, too, to cut down on the number of reinspects. So what we propose is you apply for the license, get that initial inspection, and then we're gonna come back and do the reinspection for no charge to validate it. But then if things aren't fixed there, and we have to come back again, looking at a reinspection fee. A lot of communities do that. Some have escalating fees, where they go up the more times you have to come back. We're looking just to try to keep it simple right now, and having that fifty dollars, basically to help drive people to get their stuff fixed, so we don't drag out these application and the inspection process. And then, maybe looking at the fees a little bit more regularly. I know there's another initiative that staff's working on to sort of consolidate all our fees into one fee structure and have them all in one spot, so we can review them a little bit more regularly and see if changes need to be made. So that's what I wanted to propose, or bounce off you guys, see if there's feedback, different directions. We haven't started working on changes to ordinances or anything yet, we're just looking at what the structure is and wanted to get some feedback.
Okay, real quick, because we're at 5:47, and the next one's supposed to start at 5:45.
I think we'd be naive in thinking that every landlord has their place registered. What percentage would you say we're at, and what would be typical?
I couldn't give a good guess now. We have, last few years, we have been making a very conscious effort to identify ones that aren't. So for example, you know, if we're in a neighborhood, we see a for-rent sign somewhere, you know, we'll go look it up and send them a note if they're not. We've been going back through past records to define ones that maybe we had registered ten years ago, and then looking at land records. So we're still consciously trying to catch up on those. I'm sure there are some, but that's why, you know, if I look back in 2022, you know, just the amount of rental revenue has gone up in the last couple of years, because we have been catching, some of those have slipped through. So fortunately, I can't give you a good guess right now, but we are consciously still trying to tackle those and identify those to ensure that we have safe spots.
Second comment, if I may. I would think both the landlord and the renter would encourage a robust inspection. I know the cost gets slid down to whoever is renting, but to see a rental license and know that it's been inspected, that must make a rental, a renter feel better. And on the other hand, I think a landlord would feel good, and the insurance company maybe demands a rental license, right, to rental. So I would think both parties with a robust inspection would feel better. Thank you.
All right, we need to move on to the next item. We're a couple of minutes behind. Abdo Finance Department Structure Review, and that is with Jody Burscham. And Jody should be on our screen.
She'll be appearing here in a second.
Thanks, Ed.
Feel free to reach out if you have questions or suggestions.
And there she is.
Hello?
Good evening.
Thank you. Are you, I can't see the council, so are you ready?
We are ready, Jody, and we've got you until about 6:05.
All right, so make it quick. I have a quick, I'll share my screen here. I just have a quick couple of slides here.
And Jody, just- So you know you have the full council and the mayor here that you're presenting to, along with our city attorney and some folks in the audience.
Great, thank you. Thank you, council and mayor. I'm Jody Burscham. I'm a partner here with Abdo. Just a little bit about Abdo. We're an accounting firm with over sixty years of experience. Yeah, just tell you a little bit about our firm. One sector of our firm is our advisory team, which has over fifty years of combined experience, specifically in the government sector. We work closely with the finance department, acting as really an extension of your team. And tonight, I am really excited to share the results of our recent review of the finance department's organizational structure. The full report, I believe, is included in your packets, so I'm going to give you just a high-level overview of that report tonight. We began this project back in August of 2025, so just a few months ago, with the goal of identifying ways to improve efficiency and effectiveness, as well as strengthening internal controls. We actually evaluated the current staffing structure and the position capabilities, and then developed a recommended structure that positions the city for success. So just a little bit about the process. We engaged with city staff from various departments to gain that understanding of how the finance department operates. We conducted discussions both in person and via Zoom throughout August and September. We felt like by connecting with that staff, we were able to see firsthand how tasks were managed, how information flows, where improvements can be made. That collaborative approach really helped us understand the unique challenges and strengths within the department, and it helped us shape the recommendations that you see in that report. We also thoroughly examined the job descriptions, re-reviewed transactional workflows. We analyzed daily operations to really pinpoint those areas for improvement. We also explored ways to automate processes and tried to figure out, you know, how we can leverage your existing finance system to identify further improvements. And that overall approach really allowed us to identify key areas where changes could have a significant impact. So in the report, it outlines the current state of the finance department. I'm not going to go through all the details to sit in the report, because it's quite a long report. But it does provide an in-depth review of each of the finance positions. And on this slide here, it shows the current structure, showing four full-time positions and one part-time position. So as we reviewed that current state, it became clear that there were several areas that could use some focused attention to really enhance the efficiency and overall effectiveness of your finance department. And so to address this, we recommended implementing, to start out with, with number one here, we recommended implementing the comprehensive training program, really focused on GASP, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, their principles, and other essential financial concepts. And then, next, we also suggested initiating cross-training programs to really equip employees with the skills necessary to fulfill backup roles in order to really enhance that operational resilience and stability. And then, third, we proposed conducting monthly cross-departmental meetings to really foster alignment and cooperation throughout the city. Four, we recommend scheduling weekly team meetings to enhance coordination, accountability, and even improve the morale within the finance department. The fifth one here is we propose hiring additional staff. You'll see that in the upcoming slides here, which is a part-time role. And also filling the vacancy, which is a full-time role, to really help alleviate the capacity pressure and improve overall workflow. The sixth one here, we suggested establishing consistent review procedures, such as monthly reconciliations to ensure the accuracy, meet compliance measures, and really provide timely identification of any discrepancies that might occur in the finances. The seventh one here is to further enhance accountability and transparency. We recommend redistributing tasks, leveraging that automation, and really clearly defining the role responsibilities. And finally, to standardize operations and improve training, we're recommending developing and maintaining up-to-date documentation for each role and process. So all of these recommendations really focus on ensuring the department can operate efficiently, effectively, and put in place internal controls to minimize any risk exposure. So this, in the report, it really, it identifies a proposed future structure, incorporating all the recommendations that I just mentioned. And here, it just identifies that we're recommending expanding the department for the, from the four-and-a-half to the five roles, which is adding that part-time role to the structure, along with filling the vacant role. This will especially help with the appropriate segregation of duties to improve that internal controls. And I won't go into detail for each of the roles, because it's pretty significant, but the report does outline recommendations for new responsibilities for each position. And there is some significant shifting of responsibilities as well to align with the role and the responsibilities. This is really to build a solid foundation to position the department for success. All of this is outlined in the report with a flowchart showing which responsibilities remain the same and which responsibilities will change or be shifted to other roles. And this change will increase capacity. There's going to be centralized certain processes within the finance from other departments to really make that a centralized process for various areas. And enhance internal controls, provide appropriate backup, and set clear expectations for responsibilities to meet regulatory compliance. And then the last section in the report proposes a backup plan for key responsibilities to maintain seamless operations if there is going to be a vacancy or even during absences. So here, I just outlined, you know, what are the next steps, what are we focusing on next? And that is going to be completing the process evaluation. This is gonna be a crucial part of enhancing the financial operations. It's very similar to the process that we just completed, but it focuses on the transactional workflow instead of the org structure. It covers all the functional areas in finance, including accounts receivable, cash receiving, purchasing, bank reconciliations, the capital assets, the financial reporting, along with that internal control piece. And so a detailed report at the end will also be prepared, outlining the issues and providing recommendations, and we'll present that to council on a later date as well. And I did want to just say that I have really enjoyed working with your team and excited for their future. And with that, I'll turn it back to council.
All right, that's the complete report.
That is. You should have the, hopefully, you guys all have the whole report in your packets.
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, thank you, Jody. We appreciate it. And for council, if there are any questions, direct those to Jenna Tuma, and she will work with staff and Jody to get the answers for you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now we're ahead of schedule. How did that happen? Real quick, I've got a brief update. We had a CGMC board meeting last week. The housing is kind of a mess. They're working on a bill for a housing grant program, and it's gonna have scoring criteria. The way it is set up right now, it's kind of gonna have a negative impact on greater Minnesota and a more positive impact for the metro region. So that's something that CGMC will really be keeping a close eye on. Brad stated that right now, they have very low expectations for the session that's gonna begin after the first of the year. He doesn't think there's gonna be much accomplished. There's, we've got an election year. He didn't feel that we're going to be seeing bonding. It's going to be really, really a quick session, it's a short session. And much like last year, there's going to be not enough consensus to move things forward to the governor's office. Both sides are kind of locked into what they want, and, and that's where they're going to be. The, excuse me, LGA proposal, there, there is a challenge going on with data centers. The data centers, they want to change the, how the property taxes are, are taken into effect. Basically, they, they don't want property taxes. You, they don't want to be, have to give up property taxes for that big expansive piece. I, I don't know how you can get by with that. We, we don't have anything, obviously, that we're looking at for a data center. I, the, the communities that are putting these in, it, it, it sounds like it's going to be a big buildings with not a lot of money, not a lot of jobs going back into it. So. They are also looking at really pushing to bring back the local cannabis tax. If you remember when, when they passed legalizing cannabis, cities were promised that they would be able to recoup some of the taxes that are sent to the state. Well, then, as the shortfall happened up at the state, the state decided, well, the cities don't need that money. We need it. And so the coalition is going to be, going to be pushing for, to get that back on. Economic development, there were airport grants through the BDPI program, and that has been canceled. It wasn't used. It was out there for five or six years, and it was never used. So that has sunsetted and probably will not be coming back. Next week, we have Jenna Toobin and myself will be at the CGMC Fall Conference. I am excited. They changed the format up a little bit. So I think that more than, than just people talking, we should have a, a really good report after, after that Fall Conference is done. So that is, that is it. Any questions? Anything you would like us to cover at the conference next week? All right, we are still ahead. So that means Brian gets to talk longer. We have Brian, Brian Johnson from Aylers going to give us an investment update, and hopefully it's over two hundred million dollars.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
You definitely don't want me talking longer. So I'll try to move swiftly. I don't know how much time I have, but I'll definitely try to move swiftly through, through the review. So. Want to provide a brief overview kind of what's going on economically, what the city is allowed to invest in, what we currently have structured into the portfolio as well, but just, just kind of provide a high-level overview of, of what's going on in the economy, interest rates specifically, what's going on with the Federal Reserve has been in the news a lot lately as well, just to kind of touch base, high level, if you will, on what, what the market looks like, what the interest rate environment looks like, and how, you know, subsequently we're structuring the portfolio on behalf of the city. So just kind of jumping into it a little bit here as well, obviously, just given that the city is permitted by, by Minnesota Statute 118A in terms of what they're allowed to invest in for general funds, bond proceeds, other operating funds, et cetera. We're really looking at the fixed income environment, and when we're doing that, we're really kind of driven by, especially on the short end of the market, what's going on with the Federal Reserve. So as you can see here on the screen, wanted to highlight where the US Treasury rates were as of yesterday. You can see where the rates kind of were on the short end of the market. The Federal Reserve met recently, did cut their overnight rate by twenty-five basis points or a quarter of a percent. But really, what I want to focus on mostly is a year-over-year change. As you can see, within the last twelve months, there's been a significant reduction in interest rates, just, especially on the short end of the curve, but if you look out to five years by, you know, almost a half a percent or more, depending on where you look overnight out to five years. So rates have, have shifted, if you will, over the last twelve months. We're still nowhere near where we were in two thousand twenty and twenty-one, coming out of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, where anything above zero was a good interest rate at that point in time. We're, we're in a much better spot now, but it has shifted from where it was earlier this year and certainly back into last year as well. So just wanted to provide that update. Looking forward, if this jumps forward, here we go. Really wanted to highlight too what the market anticipates. Now, this is kind of like looking at a ten or a longer day weather forecast. It's never always going to be a hundred percent accurate, if you will, but at least what the market is thinking, the, the rates are going to look like in, in the near term, but also maybe the longer term here as well. And you can see where we are right now. There's going to be some, some shifts one way or another, certainly, but from a one-month rate out to a twenty-year rate, there's not a seismic shift from where the spot is today versus out to three months or even three years. So we're kind of getting into that, that terminal rate. There's a lot of economic data that the Federal Reserve does process that will influence interest rate directions moving forward, but just very high level. We're, we're kind of in a good, I would say, good barometer where interest rates might be for the foreseeable future here at the, at the moment. So. With that said, the federal funds effective rate, as I mentioned, they just met recently. They did lower by, by twenty-five basis points. No, I gotta go all the way through here, maybe? There we go. Oops. Kind of jumped ahead. Well, I'll kind of walk through it, but the Fed did lower. So their target federal funds rate right now is three point seven five percent to four percent, so twenty-five basis point lower than it was.
You should be able to click through. I think Jackson's zooming in.
Oh, gotcha.
Because this is really thin.
So yeah, the, the Fed does meet again in December, and it's really kind of anyone's guess right now what's going to happen. Basically, before the Fed's last meeting, when they did cut, there was about a hundred percent chance that they were going to cut that meeting, which they did. And then there was about ninety to ninety-five percent chance that they were going to cut again in December by another twenty-five basis points. That's kind of on hold at this point in time. Jerome Powell, after that meeting, came out and said that a December rate cut was anything but certain at that point in time, largely because the Fed is not getting a lot of economic data right now with the government shutdown. So they, they drive a lot of their policy and interest rate decisions on, they kind of have a dual mandate, if you will, and, and that's maximum employment, which is trying to keep employment between three and a half and four percent, and also keeping inflation low, and their target rate there is two percent. And right now, they're not getting any of that data to look and see where unemployment rates are or even where CPI or PCE numbers are. They're two pre-preferred measures on inflation. So. All that said, there's about a sixty percent chance of another rate cut yet this year. Depending on who you talk to in the market, there's some think it's going to happen, some think it's not, obviously with that fifty-fifty or a little bit better than fifty-fifty chance. But again, if it doesn't happen, it's likely going to happen in the start of next year when, when the Fed's able to kind of process through some of that data too. So we are getting into that lower rate environment than certainly we were, as, as was indicated there by the market prognostications as well. Yeah.
So do you, do you expect just the one? The markets anticipating? If they do one before the end of the year, can we also anticipate one in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-six?
There, there's, there was at least two to three priced in for the first half of next year, where those occur during the first six months of two thousand twenty-six kind of remain to be seen. But like I said, those are kind of like ten-day weather forecasts, right? Because a lot of times, the market's going to think that they're going to cut six times in a year. They cut one or two or, or maybe even zero. So there's a lot of times where that's not really accurate. So it's really trying to parse through the data, and the Fed has been very data-dependent in terms of making their decisions there. And again, that's really impacted the overnight rates. One of the, kind of anecdotally, if you will, when they did cut at their November meeting, or, excuse me, October meeting a couple of weeks ago, every rate went up actually besides the overnight rate. So the overnight rate, which is tied right to the Federal Reserve's decision, that, that overnight borrowing rate went down by the twenty-five basis points kind of subsequently, and money market fund rates, bank deposit rates, et cetera, kind of followed suit. But all the other longer-term rates actually went up. So we're, we've actually been, not to get too far into the weeds here, in what's called an inverse inverted yield curve environment. So the shorter-term rates are actually yielding more than longer-term rates, which should never really happen. The further you invest out your funds, the more yield you should get for taking a little bit more market and interest rate risk by investing further out. But with how high the short-term rate has been recently with the Fed's moves coming out of the pandemic, those rates were the top point of the market for a very long period of time. So we're starting to see those come down, and the longer-term rates are starting to, what we call slope, more in a positive direction when you go out one, two, three, five, ten years out the yield curve.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Next one I want to touch on just briefly, are the two factors, as I was alluding to, what the Fed does, does really focus on? And that's unemployment and, and the Consumer Price Index or the Personal Consumption Expenditures Index or CPI or PCE, as it's alluded to for, for inflation metrics. So as you can see here, we don't have fresh data. We just have it through August, as I alluded to with the, with the shutdown. We're not getting fresh data there as well. But you can see the unemployment rate nationally, and in Minnesota, we're a little bit lower there at three point six percent versus the four point three percent nationally. CPI is still hovering above three, right around three percent, which is above the Fed's two percent target, but certainly significantly lower than coming out of the pandemic, where we're seeing eight, nine percent inflationary rates. So that's, that's a good sign. We're getting there. Again, it remains a little bit sticky on the inflation side, but we're, we're starting to see some progress towards that as well, which the Fed feels comfortable enough to make those interest rate adjustments lower, try and do, and kind of spur along the employment market and the unemployment rate as well, as they're kind of seeing sticky inflation, but they want to make sure that they're, they're keeping the market going for, for the employment sector. Any questions on overall broad economic highlights before jumping in specifically into the city-specific data?
You've been waiting for it, Brian, so get ready.
Like I said, I hopefully didn't bore anybody enough with the, the market stuff, but. Just jumping into the portfolio itself, as I alluded to, the city is bound by Minnesota Statute 118A, which does permit, which does kind of, like I said, govern the, the public sector investors in the state. As you can see here, the market value as of the end of October was a little over forty point seven million dollars, and that was well diversified among a number of different asset classes, again, permitted by, by Minnesota statutes. So as you can see there, agencies, highly-rated taxable municipal bonds. The city as a governmental investor doesn't get any real benefit from tax-exempt municipal bonds, so any municipal you see in the portfolio will be a taxable. Money market fund there as well. Again, the short-term interest rate environment is still beneficial, so any sort of residual funds that, that are still invested there is, is really generating a higher rate of return. US Treasuries, highly-rated commercial paper, some certificates of deposit, all would be FDIC insured, and the principal paydown sector would be mortgage-backed securities, which are guaranteed or backed principally by the federal agency that's issued by them. So any time you see a mortgage-backed security or a securitized security in the portfolio like that, it's nothing that would be associated with the, you know, the two thousand and seventy, financial crisis, anything like that. They're all guaranteed and backed by a federal agency that's issuing the, the debt. So again, well diversified, broad market, if, if you will, by permissible sectors permitted by, by state statute, and of course, the city's investment policy itself. Jumping ahead one more here. There we go. And so I kind of want to look at, at where the actual, kind of what the yield of the portfolio is, the duration target, which, which kind of coalesce, coincides with the, the average maturity of the portfolio, or when the funds are coming due, if you will. You can see the, the market value, and this takes out the overnight rates, or, excuse me, the overnight taxable money market balance. And so you can see that, that change up there in the, in the upper left. That extends the duration and the average maturity of the portfolio slightly, which is around, if you add in the money market, it's right around one and a half years of the funds coming due. Taking that out, it's closer to two years. Credit quality is very, very strong, double A one, which is just a notch below the, the triple A rating. And just for, for benefit, the, the government, the US government rating is, is double A one itself. So it really coincides with the strong credit quality rating there as well. Average mature, or, excuse me, the maturity, the yield at maturity, if you will, is four point one three percent versus the three point five eight percent yield to maturity at cost. So really strong performance on the overall rate of return and the income that's being generated in the portfolio. And you can see the, the maturity here by graph as well. So again, if you're planning for certain things or looking at capital projects or other expenditures, you can see where the funds are coming due. And if, I would caution, if you look out to the twenty thirty-three and twenty thirty-five, there aren't ten-year securities in the portfolio. Those are, whether it's a principal paydown or something like a mortgage-backed security that has a final maturity there, but the weighted average life of the loans, the underlying loans generating it are one or two or three or four years. So again, the funds will be very, very shorter-term in nature versus what's showing on there as well in terms of final maturity. I'm going to jump ahead one more here, if I could. There we go. And this actually shows, I think this is a nice one to kind of provide an overview of the twelve-month liquidity in the portfolio. So again, if you're thinking about business planning around certain maturity dates or anything like that, or just saying these funds are going to be maturing on a certain date, we know we'll have them available. You can see where it is from zero to thirty days. So basically, now to a month, that really is kind of coming due between now and the end of the year and, you know, all the way out to, to one year. So this kind of provides out a really good overview, if you will, of what the liquidity of the portfolio would be. Again, if you didn't want to sell anything prior to maturity, just let the funds mature. You can kind of see what's coming due in, in a short period of time. Last but not least, I want to just touch it base briefly on the the change in allocation. We started working with the city several months ago, basically mid-summer, as you can see here in July. And you can see kind of, this is kind of a tough chart to read. I apologize for that. But you can see kind of the overall shift in the portfolio, if you will. So adding some of the sectors that we see some real value in, taxable municipals primarily is one of those as well, also maintaining a high level of liquidity in the portfolio, because we want to make sure that the, the funds are available if and when the city needs it, any sort of rainy day situation, something like that. But adding some commercial papers, some good, again, spread, which would be any sort of incremental yield above a comparable maturity treasury, which we're seeing in the marketplace for highly-rated, highly-valued securities. So we've added some taxable municipals. A lot of those have been in new issues, what we participated in the market on behalf of the city. Added some principal paydown or some agency mortgage-backed securities, as well as I was alluding to earlier. We're seeing a lot of value in that specific security. Again, just basically think about an agency bond, but is adding incremental yield above and beyond what you would be able to get over a bullet agency or a comparable maturity treasury, and also some, some highly-rated commercial papers. So continuing to diversify the portfolio, maintaining kind of that average duration target that we've talked about with, you know, Jenna, Emily, and Emily and, and team as well, just to kind of make sure we're, we're in line with some of that stuff too. So again, really well diversified in doing some, some good opportunistic buying and reallocating within the portfolio. I want to jump ahead to the looking ahead portion here, if I can get it up here. Just a, a few commentary pieces that I wanted to touch base on in advance of kind of, you know, taking any questions that anybody has here as well. But again, the big part that I led off with was just continuing to model the Federal Reserve, what's going to happen with the short-term interest rate environment. Again, we're still seeing value in, in overnight rates, but if the Fed is continuing to look at opportunities to, to lower, to kind of continue to spur on the economy, we would look to maybe opportunistically add duration or average maturity to the portfolio if the yield curve continues to steepen. And of course, city cash flows permit. I would look at that and more of a deep dive into the cash flow situation as well. Continue to diversify amongst permitted asset classes, potentially, you know, more into the US Treasury Agency asset class as well, if continuing to add that duration target to make sure we maintain liquidity in the portfolio. And then also selectively add spread sectors, potentially where possible as well. We've done a little bit of that to, to, between, you know, July and now here, but continue to look at those and, and opportunistically assess opportunities to either swap asset classes or maturities if opportunities present themselves. So ever-changing interest rate environment, ever-changing market conditions, we're always kind of looking at opportunistic ways to continue to add value for the portfolio. So with that, it's been a very fun time to work with, with staff, obviously, as well, and I thank for the opportunity to come and present to council here and. If there are questions, be happy to answer anything that's, that's on anybody's mind.
Nate?
Hopefully didn't bore anybody too much with interest rate talk and Federal Reserve talk.
So when you're, excuse me, when you're talking about the, continuing to diversify into more liquid assets, the, the one chart showed that it was one hundred and eighty to two hundred and ten. How much, how much more readily available do you anticipate that would be?
And so that was kind of as a segue from if, if the Fed continues to lower their overnight rate and we invest it out further. And so when I say diversifying into more liquid asset classes, it would be more, add more treasuries to the portfolio or something like that. So US Treasuries would be the most safe liquid security in the, in the marketplace to do that with. When I talk about spread sectors, that would be like the municipal bonds, FDIC-insured CDs, mortgage-backed securities, commercial paper, et cetera. Those would be, they're less saleable. Not that they can't be sold, they're just less saleable. The bid-ask spread between those is a little bit wider than it would be with like a US Treasury or agency bond. So my point with all, all of that is if we're going to add duration because the short-term interest rates were lowering, we want to do that with liquid securities, that if the city needs them at any given time, we could sell them. Even if it's a three-year maturity, it could be sold readily in the marketplace with limited risk.
You have a question?
I do.
Go ahead, Nate.
So at the risk, at the risk of exposing my ignorance, this is unrestricted funds that we have in investments.
Yep.
What scenario would we utilize these funds?
Well, a lot of the times, these are just, you know, fund balances, rainy day funds. Well, a lot of the times these are just, you know, fund balances, rainy day funds.
But this, is this reflected in our fund balance in total? Like where does this show up? Just the investment portfolio, where does that show up in our financial? Our financials in general? Like does that, is this what carries over in our fund balance? Like get that, that fund balance gets invested in this, in the portfolio and that's where it lives?
I would.
Is that correct? This is not a separate pot of money.
I would have to turn to Bernsy, to our Emily, to Burns to tell me the details on that, but, uh, as we're working through some of ours, we may be able to sort that out to find out if the fund is unrestricted is in here, or if this is restricted because you'd have to sell it. It's not cash. I believe our fund reserve has to be unrestricted.
Well, I'm hoping I didn't expose too much ignorance since that was not a quick and easy answer.
So when you, when you showed where our money is, we've got, we've got, uh, money in CDs. Low risk, low interest. Well, we'd be in the CD market.
So depending on the CDs, we, when we're looking to, and a lot of them, so we started working with the city again several months ago. I'm trying to think if we've bought any CDs since we started working with the city. Some of them may have been inherited, uh, coming over and lots of times, again, there are ways to get out of CDs, but a lot of times it's, it's a penalty to sell early or something like that. So like we looked for some swap opportunities and I know, you know, Jenna and Emily and others, we've, we've talked through some different situations to do that and have done that, right? So securities that were held, um, coming out of the pandemic at much lower interest rates that we said there's, there's an opportunity to sell this and buy something a much higher yielding than we took the opportunity to do that. Even if you realize a small loss at a given time, you make that up with one coupon payment on the higher interest yielding bond, some of those things. So a lot of the CDs are, if we're adding them, they're, we're adding them because of the best possible net yield to the city at the time.
Okay.
And so there's, I should say this, there's actually been some, some statutorily changes at the state where credit union CDs are now permissible in sector. They weren't before until two years ago. So some of the CDs we're actually seeing in the marketplace are higher yielding than you would typically see, um, maybe just at a specific bank or something like that.
Okay, Dan?
Who, um, evaluates our risk tolerance? Is that something that your professional opinion says here's where we should be? And how would you describe our past risk tolerance? Have we been about the same as?
Yeah, it's a good question. So I, as, as an advisor for the city on that front, we do, we do assess the risk tolerance of the portfolio at any given time as well. And the city's, uh, has an investment policy, state statute, obviously very confining in terms of what you're able to invest in as a municipality in the state. And so there's a lot of restrictions there just naturally by, by, again, by statute and the city's policy itself. But with that said, uh, we're also looking at it with the lens of, we look at it as safety, as a first priority, liquidity second. And once those two auspices are met, we're trying to achieve a competitive rate of return of the yield thereafter. So we're looking at it with that lens. I know the city staff is looking at it with that lens as well. And so when we're looking at anything, whether it's a taxable municipal, a commercial paper piece, which obviously have rating requirements, et cetera, that are defined by statute and policy. We have enhanced rating requirement above and beyond that too. So we're, we, it's a good question. We look at every investment we make on behalf of the city with a, with a risk lens, if you will, because we think of it as a fiduciary, which we are on behalf of the city. We wouldn't make any decision on an investment that we wouldn't make ourselves. So we're very, just, and I should say it, as, at LRS, all of our clients are governmental entities, just like the city. So we know working with government that we need to have the utmost risk averse policies, if you will, when we're making our investments. So sometimes it can be on the boring side of things, but we're making adjustments, whether it's on a duration target or something like that, because we want to make sure we're maintaining a high level of compliance with the portfolio.
Other question. Other folks that we work with, uh, in the accounting biz, uh, tell us that our reserves are in, in pretty good shape and in a nice amount. What is your opinion for a city our size and?
Very healthy on the reserve side. So I'll, I'll obviously in good shape on that front as well. You know, maintaining reserves, you know, for, you know, unexpected expenditures or anything like that. And that's again, why we look at the portfolio with the safety and liquidity first. As I was alluding to, if we start extending duration, we want to make sure that if the city doesn't need these funds for, you know, capital improvement projects, street reconstruction, whatever it might be, buying a new piece of equipment. We want to be able to go to the marketplace and be able to get you the liquidity you need out of your portfolio when you need it. Thank you.
Doug?
Brian, that's, that's kind of my question. Obviously we have a few budgetary challenges at the moment.
Yeah.
And we have a couple of, uh, pretty substantial projects on the drawing board. So will your group or you and your expertise be able to sit down and figure out how all this comes together and makes us a plan?
All the math fits together in the puzzle? For sure. Yeah. And I know other colleagues of mine, you might've heard from Dan and some others before, they're working on a, a financial management planner, an FMP2. And that really is the, the blueprint, if you will, for the city in terms of figuring out how that all fits together. I'm just the investment guy, some people say, right? So I just talked about the market and how the portfolio is allocated as well, but uh, Dan and team and Kyle Sawyer, I don't know if you guys had a chance to, to work or, or speak with Kyle. I know Jenna's shaking her head yes, so I know she has, but they are really kind of the experts, if you will, on figuring out how all the pieces of the puzzle come together. They'll always come to me and be like, hey, what are you projecting for interest earnings this year? And I can give them a pretty good estimate there, but, uh, they do a really nice job of that. So answer Doug is, is yes. It's not necessarily me, I help, but they're, they're kind of the drivers behind that piece of it.
Well, maybe you can make it a lot more before next summer.
We'll keep interest rates where they are. I'll, I'll send a couple of emails to the Federal Reserve to make sure they keep them up.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
If I can just add one part, uh, Council Ray Rainey is that in the spring is when we first came on with LRS, we had moved all our investments over to help consolidate it and move it. And so uh, Brian and the LRS team helped us do that a lot. Uh, we were doing some of the investments, making some of those adjustments inside in-house. And so that's what, one of the role that LRS and, uh, and Brian has taken over. So that has been really helpful and consistent, professional, know the markets, know what they're doing. And we will have further discussions on how the safety center, how this plays into those safety centers and how to leverage that uh, to the best, uh, to what you guys are wanting to. But it's a good tool to have as we're going forward. So, the LRS team, as Brian said, is, he's kind of in the LRS team, but a little bit separate because of the investment, just to keep that separation. Uh, but, uh, we really do appreciate the work that the LRS team has done. We've got some really good partners on, uh, coming alongside of us on all this work. So really appreciate the work.
They do all that for free.
All of it for free.
That's the best thing.
He didn't say no.
Eight, one percent, half a percent on the interest rate.
No, no, not even close, but we very much, uh, appreciate the opportunity to come down here. We very much value the relationship we have with the city. So thank you all for the opportunity to come and present in front of you this evening. So.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Jenna, do we?
Thank you for being here.
Do we have anyone coming for the cannabis or can we move forward with that right now?
It's just in-house. It's, uh, Mark and myself, uh, to help answer if there was any follow-up questions. It was just kind of a placeholder if anybody had additional questions.
Okay. So if, if I can give a brief update, um, in talking with the county people, I asked about their, um, how they, how they go about, uh, checking establishments and come to find out that they do very few. They do Medford and, and not many more be, simply because Ellendale has a police department, uh, Blooming Prairie does. So really the scope of, of their duties on that are not that much. And so they will be able to do the code enforcement in, in the city of Oatown. It's not going to be that much larger for them. And then the other question that I had for Mr. Mundell was, you know, you can go into a liquor store right by a school and buy liquor, but you're not allowed to buy what I would consider 32 marijuana. And that is not a, a local thing. That is a state mandate. So there's, you know, the local hands are tied because of, because of state regulations. So those were my two questions. I don't recall if any other council had any questions on that. So at this time I'd turn it over to Mr. Walbrand.
I met, uh, I talked with the chief Mundell, uh, Monday morning and, uh, there are no changes in the, uh, excuse me. I, uh, talked with chief Mundell, Mund- Mundell, Monday morning and, uh, there are no changes in the proposed ordinance here for the second reading. Edibles are certainly new territory for us and, uh, but the nice thing is that, uh, ordinances are not carved in stone. So as we grow with this and have more experience with it, one way or the other, we'll be able to, uh, it's, it's malleable and we'll be able to make changes as, as they may be warranted. I did send everybody here, uh, I think about an hour ago, uh, some literature from the Minnesota Department of Health on, uh, the low dose cannab- uh, hemp, uh, the low dose hemp product and also the, uh, the one with higher, higher dosage. And, uh, even the low dose one, if you, if, if a person takes it, uh, because it has a slow effect, a person will take, will say, I'm another one, uh, they could easily get into the, over the amount that is reasonable to take. And so it's, it's a, it's a risky thing. If one OD's on this, uh, or takes more than, uh, what is allowed. Uh, some of the, some of the bad effects are extreme anxiety, psychotic episodes, increased heart rate with chest pain and even heart attacks, uncontrollable, uncontrollable shaking or seizures and decreased judgment. And, uh, worse being, becoming unresponsive. So it's not, you know, it looks like candy, but it's not. The other thing, uh, I wanted to point out is that, um, s- sometimes people will, will be, we're prone to making comparisons, uh, with new products with old things. There's nothing wrong with doing that, but you know, with 32 beer at the grocery store, uh, at the C store, you, people who drink beer, know beer, know how much they can drink generally. Uh, and know when they should quit. They know when they have a buzz and when they don't. Uh, but with the cannabis, uh, or with the, uh, low potency, potency, the, the low potent, uh, of the ca- of the hemp, uh, candy, it's, it's not quantified to a degree that one could say, well, I'll take this one and then I'll take this one. In other words, you don't know what's going to happen. That'll be, that'll come with experience. Cannabis or rather, uh, low potency beverages, while, uh, while, uh, the low potency products are only available at stores, uh, where the patrons have to be 21 years or older. You know, there's two exceptions to that. Ones that, uh, uh, a medicinal dispensary, uh, for persons who are under 21, if it's registered, if they're registered. And the second is a, a food and licensed, uh, food and beverage licensed establishment. But then in that case, of course, it's only sold to people who are 21 years of, of age or older. So, I think in all, it's a pretty good ordinance, but like I say, uh, we'll probably be tweaking it down the road. Just as people had to do, uh, years and years ago when alcohol was opened up again, you know, after banned. So, process.
Any questions for Mr. Walbrand? All right, um, that was what we had on our study session. Does any have any board updates? Dave?
Joint Powers met this afternoon and basically other than paying the bills and a few updates on software. They anticipate being out of Pearl Street in June. And moving to Faribault.
Or is that coincide with what we have planned?
We were hoping, I think a little earlier than that, but I'll let them work out the details on what that looks like.
I think there's a little wiggle room in there. So
Okay.
I think that's probably the date at the lowest, uh, the old, longest will be June. Otherwise they'd like to get out of there sooner the better.
Okay. Any other updates, Nate?
Uh, I get a quick HRA, uh, biggest thing on the HRA's docket is the government shutdown and HUD funding. So we are kind of in limbo as to how that's going to go. Um, I think they waffled on that. It was, November was good. Then December, then they went back to just November, which those payments come in later. So, we're kind of waiting to see if we're going to have to scramble a little bit on what happens with the shutdown. So that's the biggest thing on HRA's docket right now.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have staff positions paid for by HUD?
Part of it, like there's an allocation to the administrative, administrative portion of it. So yes. I mean, our financials look pretty good for the most part, but we can't weather a long storm without that contribution.
Yeah, I think we, I think we're covered through the end of the year for sure and in the part of next year and it'll all come down to, uh, what they're deciding to do, uh, with December payments. Uh, I think we got a report yesterday afternoon that they were going to do December payments. So, so if that's the case, then we'll be good into next year. Anything else? Seeing none, we will be done until, uh, 6:59, 59. Thank you all.